Microphones.
Well, now I'll call to order the February twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, City of Abilene, Kansas, City Commission Meeting. Jaylen, may we please have a roll call?
Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Witt.
Here.
Commissioner Kohlhoff.
President.
Commissioner Eisenberg.
Here.
Roll call is complete.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, Constitution under our, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up, we have the approval of today's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the change in removing item seven D.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion?
On item seven C, I don't believe that's been through a study session, so I would suggest moving that to either items for discussion or the study session if the commission would be in agreeance.
I think we talked about it last.
That was on last week's study session.
Two weeks ago.
The disadvantaged business enterprise?
Those both were, yeah.
Both B and T.
Leanne talked about them.
My apologies.
Do you have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, would you roll call vote? Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohloff?
Aye.
Commissioner Eisenberg?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is the consent agenda, which consists of only the meeting minutes from the, that's the wrong date. February tenth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting.
I move to approve the minute, or move to approve the consent agenda reflecting, acknowledging that that date needs to change.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, would you roll call vote? Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohloff?
Aye.
Commissioner Eisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is public comments and communications under public forum. There's anyone like, that would like to address the commission on an item not currently on our agenda, they may do so at this time. Do we have anyone that would like to?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
As promised, I'm here to reiterate my demands for qualified leadership for the city. For those that aren't clear, I'm speaking now, and previously in my speeches during public comment, in my role as a citizen of Abilene. My role of commissioner is only by virtue of being a citizen of Abilene. There was a newspaper article last week, and it was quoted that I was making accusations, and I felt the need to clarify. There's hardly a single thing that I brought up in public and to the commission in these speeches that isn't already a matter of public record. As such, I believe these are facts that I'm reiterating and not accusations. Yes, I have mentioned that Mr. Marsh somehow neglected to include almost a half a million dollars in the budget last year. That's not an accusation, that's a fact. I've reiterated that Mr. Marsh told the city commission, we're approving a letter of support for the county for funds at Fourteenth and Van Buren, land which is not within the city limits, and then Mr. Marsh applied for the funds on behalf of the city. That is not an accusation, that is a fact. Then Mr. Marsh proceeded to direct Olson to come up with multimillion dollar solutions to these problems, when the county was able to solve most of them for less than a couple hundred thousand dollars, wasting our time and resources in the process. Not an accusation, that's a fact. These and many others demonstrate a lack of the leadership that is necessary for our great city. Now, we are going to be discussing a six million dollar bond project brought about by a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar obligation for an industrial park and two street projects which have not yet been approved, one of which the commission directed Mr. Marsh to pursue for twenty twenty five, which he decided to move to twenty twenty six without commission approval, and a potential twenty twenty six project which hasn't been approved yet by the commission. While all of these actions are probably not illegal, taken together, they have proven to me that our city needs better leadership. Leadership. And while they are likely not illegal, taken together, I feel that it is unethical for the city commission to allow Mr. Marsh to continue in this role to the detriment of the economic health of Abilene. As public servants, we are obligated by our code of ethics, Abilene City Code one dash three oh nine, I'll provide you with a copy, to hold this office for the benefit of the public. I will not sit quietly while our city is mismanaged. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to address the commission on an item not currently on our agenda? Okay, if you could just state your name, please.
James Price, live upon Northeast Seventh Street here in a taxpayer and a voter. I guess it bothers me. I spent forty years in management of people in the military and in the postal service, and I was taught how to, how to manage people. As far as I can tell, you four and the other one, fifth one, are this gentleman's manager. You don't jump out in public. I think it's bad, rude, terrible policy to keep bringing this crap up, quite frankly. This is a guy over here that's supposed to be the legal specialist. If he can't find something to bring to court, I think he needs to bury it. I voted for you, John, to start with because I thought you would question some things. You've gone way beyond that. I've worked with Ron on two or three occasions. He's always treated me fair, and as far as I can tell, he's treated the city fair. I don't necessarily agree with his management style either, but then, you know, let's be, we've lost too many good managers over the year, and we've kept some of the worst ones I could imagine. And if that's three minutes, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to address the commission on an item not on our current agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will move into our first business item, seven A, consider approval of a bid from Blue Valley Public Safety for a federal signal rotating storm siren in the amount of thirty one thousand, two hundred and fifty nine dollars and sixty five cents. Assistant Chief Stock.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Before you, there's a project we discussed two weeks ago at study session, and I am just asking for your approval, so we can get this ordered. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for staff or comments from anyone in the public?
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid from Blue Valley Public Safety for a federal signal rotating storm siren in the amount of thirty one thousand, two hundred and fifty nine dollars and sixty five cents.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, would you roll call vote? Commissioner Kohloff?
Aye.
Commissioner Eisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is seven B, consider approval of the disadvantaged business enterprise DBE program for the City of Abilene's Municipal Airport, K seventy eight, and authorize the city manager to sign the policy statement. City Manager Marsh.
Commissioner, since Leanne is on vacation, I'll address this. The disadvantaged business enterprise programs are required for the FFA funded projects. These regulations recently, have recently changed, which means we need to do an updated program for the T hangar project we are pursuing. Olson Engineering, our airport engineers, have drafted an updated DBE program that has been reviewed by the city's attorney. Since we discussed this last week, I recommend you approve the DBE program.
Any questions for staff or comments from the public?
One of the things, I guess, to reiterate from, that was brought up in the last meeting is that this program, we're saying it's updated, but the city actually didn't have one on, on file. Isn't that, that's correct. So this is kind of fixing that paperwork for the FAA.
Any further questions for staff?
I'll make a motion to approve the disadvantaged business enterprise program for the City of Abilene Municipal Airport, K seventy eight, and authorize the city manager to sign the policy statement.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, would you roll call vote? Commissioner Eisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohloff?
Aye.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is seven C, consider approval of work order number eight with Olson Engineering for the design and bidding of a minimum four plane T hangar in the amount of a hundred and twenty two thousand, one hundred dollars. City Manager Marsh.
Commissioners, again, I'll cover for Leanne. This was discussed last week, or excuse me, two weeks ago. We've been working with our airport engineers on the, excuse me, for the hangers, T hangers, rebuilding of those that were knocked down in a windstorm several years ago. This contract is for a hundred and twenty two thousand, one hundred dollars. The design phase is a hundred and nine thousand, three hundred. Bidding phase is twelve thousand, eight hundred, hopefully to start this on March first. And if you have any questions, I'll have to have Leanne get back with you.
The thing reiterating from the last meeting was noting that minimum four plane, and it sounded like engineer from Olson thinks potentially six, maybe, and more out there.
Yes.
So, do you, you guys want to?
James Price, Chairman of the Airport Board. We were supposed to have had a meeting the first of this month, and due to illness, it didn't happen. But from my standpoint, as an individual, I don't understand the four hangar, T hangar. We've been looking for eight or ten. And I'm, I'm curious where this is coming from, where it's going to.
It's what we can afford right now, Jim, and we think we can do six, based on the engineer, what the engineer told us.
How many?
Six, up to six. It'll be, we'll be able to expand it as we get more money. But this is, this is a start to get at least six up. That's, I know that's what we just, we talked about.
Yeah, from one, my understanding in the past, what we got from insurance proceedings isn't enough to cover, cover the replacement of what we, what we used to have.
You know, there, there are ways we could have started building five years ago, but we kept putting it off because we were short of fund. And Diane, pardon me, Olson finally talked Leanne into going this other way back to the FAA. I kind of wanted to stay away from the FAA because it's going to automatically cost you thirty or forty percent more because they're involved. But, you know, you guys have to make that decision. What we're doing is trying to make a recommendation.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, and then I.
Jeremy's also a member of the board here.
If you could, if you do, please take the voting.
Jeremy Gorman, nineteen fifty eight, every six seventy Chapman. Just, just so that I'm clear, we're still talking about the KDOT funds involved in that as well, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
It's a match.
So you're saying potentially we can only afford, even with the KDOT funds, the, the, between four and six?
Correct, to start with, and then we'll, we'll expand that to eight to ten, and hopefully more than that down the road.
Okay. Okay, yeah, no problem.
It's a start.
I just remembered that we had, we had talked about, you know, by pooling all of those, that we ought to be able to be minimum of six and potentially eight, but.
We're being conservative.
Roger that.
Yeah.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, that's the understanding, working from engineers' estimates that try to estimate high, and we don't have bids in yet for it, so, but building them in such a way where it can easily be added on to.
Yeah, and I think that meeting two weeks ago, he said for sure six, eight potentially, but just not sure what you're all going to get into.
Yeah, and then I think the FAA is just another ninety, ten when it comes to FAA funds. So, so yeah, knowing that FAA is going to make it cost more, but then the FAA is covering ninety percent, so.
I think, I'm not sure if all of you had a chance to dig into the exhibit A design phase, but I think I'm with you, Mr. Price. My understanding is that there were significantly more hangers there, and definitely a need for even more than we had previously, if I'm not mistaken. And I think if you look at the exhibit A design phase costs, I mean, the thing that stands out to me, if you look at that under number one, there's direct salary costs, which includes maybe ten people who are doing work for total direct salary costs of twenty seven thousand, five hundred and forty five dollars, which seems pretty reasonable. Mr. Gorman, maybe you know what I'm going towards here, but then there's labor in general and administrative overhead costs of fifty one thousand, which are a hundred and eighty five percent of the direct salary costs involved in this process, which is basically bottom line for our engineers, and that's exactly why I think we need to bid out these projects. There's absolutely no reason why Olson, as our master engineer, cannot bid out design services. In fact, I think there's many other cities that do something very similar, and it looks like we're, we're just giving them fifty thousand dollars because the FAA is giving us ninety percent. There's also a fixed fee on top of that of eleven percent, just because. I don't know if, my guess is that that's something that the FAA allows, and so that's what they put in there, and most people only pay ninety percent of it, so they don't ask any question, or ten percent of it, I'm sorry. So they don't ask any questions. We need to be doing better with our public funds. We can do anything in the city, but we can't do everything. And I think we need to, we need to look at absolutely everything. I, I, I can't approve this. I would, I'm all for bidding this out. I'm for bidding it out, I'm for bidding out the construction. I understand the FAA has to be involved to some degree, but they don't have to be involved in everything. I think absolutely we should take advantage of the ninety percent that we're entitled to for the airport, but I don't think we should be giving Olson and Associates sixty two thousand dollars because they know that somebody else is writing the check.
Do you have any other questions for staff?
I'll make an appro, motion to approve work order, order number eight with Olson Engineering for the design and bidding of a minimum four plane T hangar in the amount of a hundred and twenty two thousand, one hundred dollars.
I'll second it.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion?
This is, oh, sorry, sorry, this is Commissioner Miller. I, I do have some questions, and Commissioner Kohloff brought up some good points that I'd like to get a better understanding of. The amount that, the amount that we are looking to approve is just the, is it just the engineering? The design and bidding? And then KDOT is gonna cover fifty fifty match? So the FFA is gonna cover ninety percent?
KDOT covers the fifty fifty, fifty fifty match up to two thirty three, and then above that, the FAA match kicks in for ninety, ten of the construction costs above KDOT's funding amount.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Is it, just so I'm clear on that as well, my understanding is that's like a, the final project is essentially fifty, forty five, five. So KDOT's paying the first half upfront, there's no match for their funds. The city pays forty five percent, and FAA pays for the five percent, ten percent of the city's funds. Is that correct?
I don't follow that, that, that train of thought, but what I could tell you is the design and engineering is fifty fifty. We, they will match, KDOT will match fifty fifty. So the design and engineering looks like that's two hundred and thirty three, four eighty one. That's KDOT, they're matching, they're matching a fifty fifty match, and then FAA will match any of the construction costs above that. So whatever it costs to construct above that. So let's say it came in at, I don't know, what, five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand dollars to, to, what's that? Or more, yes, thanks, Jim. Or more, to build that, then they will cover anything above that two thirty three, up to ninety percent of it, so.
Any further commission discussion?
Just so I'm abundantly clear here. So we have, let's make easy math here. We've got two hundred thousand dollars that we're trying to approve now. Let's say the full project is a million dollars. Regardless of what KDOT pays, FAA is paying ninety percent of that total construction, design, bidding, every cost.
Yeah, design, bidding, construction.
Jim, do you remember, is there a limit on the FAA funds? I'm trying to remember. It's been a while since I've looked at it. Right.
And this portion here. Thing involving the FAA is he has to design something that keeps them happy.
Yes.
Even though you can put almost any aviation aid in and pick up, you know, somebody else in Iowa builds these for a living, maybe give you an issue, certain pieces considerably less. Turn is, if it comes to anything that we're happy with, in two, three years down the line, and they, they won't buy it. They won't put any funding.
Okay.
Can you elaborate on that? Could, would you mind coming to the microphone to discuss that? Can you come to the microphone, first of all, though? Wendy probably can't hear you.
Well, the FAA, the FAA has to have certain levels, and obviously any government bidding, and that includes, well, this thing we just talked about, disadvantaged business enterprise. You have to have certain DEI qualifications, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. When we were originally looking at this, unfortunately, nobody came forward and gave us a, an avenue to rebuild portions of what we lost. The structure that was there was a pole barn, basically, and the insurance that covered it was hundred and, no, two hundred and some thousand dollars, I think. And then we got a, a promise from the, we got a little extra money that came in for the airport fund that would go into that also. The total was about a half a million dollars with KDOT, if I'm not mistaken. Well, that's fine, except that the half a million dollars is going to build us three or four, and we need ten. And it went on and on and on. Unfortunately, the price of everything's gone up. Everybody knows that, I guarantee. Price of everything's gone. Anyhow, the last that was worked out was Diane was going to take it over, go back to the feds. She has affirmed that the FAA will make that ninety, ten difference between what we've got and ultimately what is built. She's also looking at, now starting to design it in March, maybe start construction next year, and then complete the construction the year following. And we've been without the hangar five years, I think, now. So we've lost a lot of traffic, a lot of income, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So.
And, and to reconfirm just my understanding how this will play out in the long term ideally is, I remember from these past five years where these FAA funds come in, and we didn't have a place for them, and then we punted those to other local airports. My hope is, now that we've got plan in place and we're building stuff that maybe some of these other airports, we get some of those punted funds back to us.
I had a rich uncle years ago that died. I don't think he knew my name. And so I don't know that I'd want to hold my breath on.
Right, yeah.
Uh, yeah, that is true. We gave they're down southeast part of the.
Is it Fort Scott?
Fort Scott, a hundred and fifty thousand. That helped them do some runway and some ramp working, et cetera. Well, if they have a three hundred and fifty thousand, we can ask for it. We can't, it actually goes through KDOT when they start doing it.
Yep.
And we gave money, I think it was to Emporia years ago.
That sounds right.
It's never come back. But at least it was spent on airports within the state of Kansas.
Right.
So it's not lost money like so much federal budgeting.
I did have one follow-up question. You said that there's a possibility of people out of Iowa, I think you said, that would build something that would meet your needs and might be approved by the FAA today?
There's a lot of people that build hangers for a living. And quite often, they are actually FAA approved. I hate to reach out and do that because they might want my checkbook or something. Diane is the, the airport person in, in engineering that can contact them and all the bells and whistles and all this kind of stuff. And I don't think we've got anybody in the city properly. That's why we're hiring Olsons to do this kind of stuff. Yes, it costs too much money, especially when you consider the engineering is already done, except for maybe getting some drainage heights and a few things like that, because the building's been there. All you gotta do is put some more slab in and what to put on top of. That might be oversimplification, but you had a million dollars in your hip pocket, you could probably get it done pretty quick. That's answered the question at all.
Well, I guess it kind of gets to my concern, which is that Olson is really looking out for their bottom line and not the, not the city's. And I think that there's probably some more cost effective options, and I think, I don't know, it's in black and white. They're telling us exactly what they're going to charge us. They're just gouging us for overhead. So we could have twenty seven thousand, we could go higher than that for twenty seven thousand plus eighteen thousand dollars in non-salary expenses, or we can pay a hundred and nine.
If this figure is for a four plane T hangar, and we ultimately end up with eight, that's two hundred and forty four thousand dollars right there, if, if the engineering runs in relation to the price, the price of the hangar. But yeah, it's, it's a empty purse string, I guess. I don't know.
Yeah. I wouldn't, I would like to see this go out to bid. I mean, that's, I'm, I'm, as you may have guessed, not going to vote for it. I think it needs to go out to bid, and I think we need to listen to people like Mr. Price and Mr. Gorman and see if we can't get more for our money.
Well, that was my concern four, five years ago, but it's going on for a long time now, and I, we probably ought to get something done, even if it's four hangar. But we need to get cover for some of the airplanes, one sitting on the ramp out there now that, hope we don't get a hailstorm in the spring. It'll be hard on it. Anything else?
Do we have any further commission discussion on this item? entertain a motion?
I think, already been moved and seconded.
Sorry. No further commission discussion. Yeah. Seeing none, would you roll call vote? Vice Mayor Miller?
I am gonna vote yes, because I want to see some activity, but I'm in agreeance with Commissioner Kohloff that some costs could be contained.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohloff?
Nay.
Commissioner Eisenberg?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is under items for discussion eight A, consider approval of charter ordinance number thirty one, a charter ordinance exempting the City of Abilene, Kansas from the provisions of KSA twelve dash one six five one regarding the naming of an official city newspaper and providing substitute and additional provisions on the same subject. City Clerk Moore?
Mayor and Commissioners, the Abilene Reflector Chronicle is currently our official public newspaper publication for all the publications that we have to be made throughout the year. They recently changed to having only printed copies on Tuesdays and Thursdays. What we have in place now only covers publishing in the printed copy, so it doesn't even cover what they would do on their internet, on their website. So we are proposing this ordinance to change the designation of the official city newspaper, and then eventually designate the printing copy for Abilene Reflector Chronicle, the online version, or. the online version, or our the city's website as possible publishing sites.
Any questions for staff or comments from the public?
Uh, no, I just, my question is for City Attorney Martin. Can you explain the requirements that we have here?
Sure, just to maybe take a step back. Right now, we're subject to KSA 12-1651, which applies exclusively to cities of the second class, which is what Abilene falls into. And it states that each city that is a city of the second class must designate by resolution a newspaper to be the official city newspaper. And that newspaper must meet certain criteria. And then, once that is designated, that is the exclusive newspaper for official city publications. And from time to time, we do publish various things, including ordinances or summaries of ordinances, public hearing notices, such as the dangerous structure one you considered at your last meeting, various notices related to planning and zoning, and several other things. However, that statute does not apply to all cities in the state uniformly. So the city's constitutional home rule powers allow the city to charter out of it or opt out of it in layman's terms and create substitute or additional provisions. So at the request of staff, we prepared this. It's something that other cities have recently been doing. There was an AG opinion recently that authorized, what I think actually clarified that cities can do this, designate their own website as the official city newspaper for a number of reasons. Some cities simply don't have a newspaper in their county, which even meets the statutory criteria anymore. Some cities find it more cost-effective or a larger audience. So there's a number of reasons. But once we charter out of it, we must then create different rules that apply to us. And what you'll see here in Section 2 of the Charter Ordinance is that we will designate from time to time by resolution one or more newspapers and/or websites. So we're giving ourselves maximum latitude and flexibility to do one, two, or even more avenues for publication, including the city's website or the Abilene Reflector Chronicle website, and no longer be bound to that one paper publication that the statute requires us to commit to. And if this were to be adopted, it must be adopted by 2/3 of the city commission, so it's going to take four votes. It would then be published in the newspaper and go into effect 61 days if there's no protest petition. And then, once it goes into effect, you would then be asked to approve a resolution. There's a companion resolution we prepared. You wouldn't vote on that today. It was just an example of, I think, what staff might recommend. But it designated the City of Abilene, Kansas website, the Abilene Reflector Chronicle website, and also the paper newspaper as the official city newspaper. So depending on the given item, you could choose where to publish that.
Thank you. Is there, I assume there's a mechanism like the city announcements where anybody who requests to be notified by the city could get any of those?
Yeah, like our community engagement page that pushes out emails.
What was the, what, you know what funds were expended to the Reflector Chronicle in the last year or two?
I do. 2022, the publishing fees were $3,870.80. 23 was $3,469.54. And 24 was $3,130.85.
I pulled up, I believe Wichita was the city that made the news, or maybe they're the only ones who have something that makes news anymore. I don't see any reason. I'd be curious what the rest of the board thinks. But if we can do it ourselves, I think we can do it effectively and without cost. I don't see any reason why someone should have to subscribe or buy a newspaper to see things that we can give them for free.
And City Attorney, you said those, what, the charter ordinance that we have in front of us doesn't outline the specific publishing avenues. It's just exempting us from that statute?
Yes, we would exempt ourselves from the statute today and that would go into effect, you know, in 61 days. The designated official city newspaper, if you chose to just make it the city website, you could do that when you adopt the resolution. But we're creating the foundation for designating that in the future to be something other than the statutory requirement or give ourselves the opportunity to, from time to time, publish elsewhere. There are certain statutes, and I'm not prepared to list them today, but that this will not apply to, and we will have to publish in a paper newspaper. They're few and far between, but in some of the statutes governing cities' actions, they require publication in an actual newspaper. This will just apply to publications in the official city newspaper, which most publications must be in.
That'd be great to kind of have a breakdown of those differences when the resolution comes up, just so it can be in our packet.
Sure.
And that's something with that. So obviously, this is just giving notice that we're considering the change. But I think it may be helpful to cover ourselves on those certain statutes that require an actual newspaper. It may be beneficial just to go ahead and designate the, you know, Reflector Chronicle paper version, Reflector Chronicle online version, and city website, all three. That way, we're not having to amend charter ordinances all the time. And then we can, we can select depending on need and statute of where we actually post those notices.
Yes, and I, one option would have been to state the new publication rules in the charter ordinance. We opted not to do that because it's such a chore to amend that. So we're just creating a rule that allows us to amend that from time to time by resolution. And if you designate one or more, that'll give you the opportunity for any particular item that requires publication to direct, you know, where that is to be published at that time. Or if you want to try to create a pre-approved publication matrix that governs, you know, or any particular category will be published, we could try to do that. I, I think there's, I think it's safe to say there's dozens of different publications cities could be required to do from time to time.
I think, I'm not sure that I'm, I'm not clear that if we put these as our official newspapers, it seems like we're required to post any of those notices in there. And I'm wondering if the commission would be amenable to something that delineates when required by law that it be published in a paper newspaper, that that's done. I think we could do that either all through the charter ordinance. I think that that's, I don't think we need to write down the list. I think if it's required to put it there, we have to put it there, even if it's not in an official newspaper. Does that make sense?
I think so. If.
I guess some language, like when publishing on a city website is not sufficient to meet statutory requirements or other than it would be published in the Abilene Reflector Chronicle or online.
And that's something we can put into that actual ordinance that we pass after this has been sent out for notice. That way, the charter ordinance itself is clean, is it?
Yes, and so this is only affecting the official city newspaper. And anytime that a statute requires publication in an official city newspaper, we will be able to publish in whatever medium you've designated as such. There are certain statutes that don't use the phrase official city newspaper. They will say, "A newspaper circulated weekly in the county." And in those instances, and they may say something slightly different, but something to that effect. In those instances, we'll have to publish in an actual paper newspaper circulated in the county. But the official city newspaper is a legal term defined by statute, and that is what we are affecting here. So I don't think it's necessary to distinguish or call out those instances where we're not publishing in the official city newspaper, because those will just be subject to whatever statute we're dealing with at that particular time.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. Thanks for that clarification, that official city newspaper is like its own legal thing, legal definition.
I'm really putting you on the spot here, but can you think of an example where that is the case, where we do actually have to publish it outside of our own website?
If you give me just a couple of minutes, I think I probably can.
I will state, I guess, just for the benefit of the group, one of the things that was mentioned by the, in Wichita anyway, the people who voted against it stated there that there would be no record, potentially no record. And just something to keep in mind. So once a newspaper is printed, you know, people do record those forever. So I don't know if there is a mechanism that we can archive those for some number of years within the city. I mean, we archive pretty much everything, so I don't see it being an issue.
They got the Wayback Machine.
Right? But that is, I think, a valid concern. I think as long as we have a mechanism to archive those, I think that addresses that concern.
And any other resolutions we would pass, too, would be archived on the city's website.
I'm seeing the rationale of like a different organization, like a completely separate from government archiving. That is an, is an interesting. I think that's probably the point they're making.
Do we have any other questions in the meantime, while Aaron's looking for that?
This is Commissioner Miller. I do have a question. So we're looking at possibly approving the, the city newspaper as being the city website, the Abilene Reflector Chronicle. And what was the third one? The alternates that we were looking at?
The discussed ones were the Abilene Reflector Chronicle Print Edition, which is now only printed on paper Tuesday and Thursdays, the Abilene Reflector Chronicle website, and the city website.
Got it. Thank you.
And Wendy, just so you're clear, what we are discussing is a charter ordinance that would allow us to state something other than the Abilene Reflector Chronicle and the online version to be our official city newspaper. So we could have the city website as our official city newspaper. So this would give us the flexibility to do that. We could still have an official newspaper. It could be the Reflector Chronicle. It could be the Salina Journal. It could be the Chapman News Times. So we've got some, some different options. But this basically just exempts us out of the requirement that we put it in a print newspaper, in my understanding.
It sounds like there's a distinction between Abilene Print and Abilene Reflector Chronicle Online. Is that correct? Because as it stands right now, it's just. What's kind of prompted this is that our official city newspaper is the print edition.
Right now, it would not be legally adequate to publish anything on the Abilene Reflector Chronicle newspaper. It would, it must always be published in the physical newspaper. This would allow the city, if it wanted to exclusively or from time to time, on a case-by-case basis, to accomplish its legal publication duties strictly on the Abilene Reflector Chronicle website. Or the city website. While I was looking, I appreciate Wendy bringing it up. And I think, I think she's right. I haven't been able to confirm it yet, but I'm confident she has. The revenue-neutral rate notice that we must, must publish annually would be an example that doesn't reference the publication obligation by official city newspaper. It's a newspaper of general circulation or something like that. So that, whatever we do here in the charter ordinance, it wouldn't help us there. We would always still need to publish in the newspaper.
Thank you. Getting Wendy an updated nameplate that says Assistant City Attorney. As soon as I heard you say that, I said, oh, duh, I should have thought of that. So, but just for clarification, all this charter ordinance does is allows us to dedicate a separate version as our official newspaper.
Yes.
And then the next resolution, if, after the protest period and after it was approved, if it was approved, we could then designate specifics in that resolution.
Yes, we're creating a blank slate to create whatever rules you wish.
Do we have any further questions for staff or comments from the public on this discussion item?
Yeah, with that, I'll make a motion to approve Charter Ordinance Number 31, a charter ordinance exempting the City of Abilene, Kansas from the provisions of KSA 12-1651 regarding the naming of an official city newspaper and providing substitute and additional provisions on the same subject.
I will second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion?
I'm looking to City Attorney Martin again. Do you feel that it would benefit the commission to wait a week for you to fine-tune language here? Or would you, again, I, I'd still think, I would like to see this on, I guess, a study session and a full commission meeting prior to approval, personally. But I didn't know if you felt that it would benefit the group to have a little bit of revision?
I do not believe it would benefit me. So long as you're comfortable with the new rule being, from time to time, we will designate by resolution one or more newspapers or websites as the official city newspaper or newspapers. And that is how it's set up, and I'm comfortable with that, if you are.
And then there's the 60-day notice given out. And then we would have to actually approve the resolution that, or I guess this, and then approve a separate resolution outlining that.
We will need, this is an example of what we will need to publish in full in the Abilene Reflector Chronicle and then wait.
Do we have any further commission discussion on this item?
Yeah.
I did, like I said, I agree with it in, in spirit, but I don't think there's any reason that we need to vote on it today. I think there's a possibility. I realize there's a 60-day protest period, but I'd like to stick to the, the protocol of having it on a study, a study session or a discussion item before we vote on it.
Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we'll roll call vote. Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff?
Nay.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is 8B. Consider approval of terminating a letter, the letter of intent with Mammoth Construction. City Manager Marsh, you're taking that?
Commissioners, back in, excuse me, May of 2024, prior to the first sales tax vote for the quality of life improvements and recreation program improvements, the city approved an LOI, letter of intent with Mammoth Construction for their help in preparing for that vote. The task force doesn't feel that between that vote and the most recent one that did pass, that Mammoth has met the intent of the letter of instruction, letter of intent, and would like to terminate that letter of intent and send out an RFP as soon as possible. We would ask for your approval to terminate that and send a letter to Mammoth.
And from serving on that committee, I can provide the, the primary driver of it is the, fundamentally Mammoth as a company is a different company now than it was when we engaged in this LOI. I think they've had somewhere from around 11 different people that were with the company at that time that aren't with them anymore. Namely, the point of contact that's listed on the LOI is, is no longer with the company. So even looking at it there, just knowing, even if having this engagement with this company, but it's fundamentally different because those people aren't there anymore. And so the committee feels like it's in the best interest of a well-run project to, again, push it back out to the different qualified vendors to, to make sure we get the best customer service, too, along this project. Because really what this vendor is doing, because all the products are going to be bid under the Greenbush contract, it's more shopping for who's going to provide the best management, general contractor, and overall customer service for the project. So that's, that's what we're wanting to find. Yeah, yeah, yep. Yeah, yeah, yep. So City Attorney Martin reviewed the previous LOI, and this this meets the termination requirements outlined in that agreement. And to potentially anticipate a question that there is a provision in that agreement that talks about potential costs incurred, but then we were the way it was communicated to us from Mammoth is that none of those costs would be incurred unless that was an explicit conversation that they said, hey, if you guys back out of this, this is going to cost you X amount. That that never happened.
And is there, just from that task force standpoint, is there a timeline on sending an updated RFP out?
Yeah, I mean, the this is a case of with the vote passing, the task force is eager to move forward with it and the yeah, yeah. So it's like, we would like to at this, yeah, in two weeks, we'd like to have an RFP before the commission to be able to push out. So yeah, this, a delay in this means delaying the project at least another two weeks and we're we're eager to see the project get get worked on.
Do we have any other questions for staff, comments from the public?
I'll I'll make a motion to approve terminating the letter of intent with Mammoth Construction.
I'll second it.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, would roll call vote. Commissioner Koloff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item, and I guess I'll give a little qualifier on this one, is 8C. Intent was an executive session to discuss the an agreement, an updated revised, however you want to say, agreement with Rural Water District Number Two. It's kind of up to the commission. We can enter into executive session to discuss the agreement that we, the letter that we sent outlining what we wished for was assigned and approved. So alternatively, we can approve that letter here today. It's just completely up to the will of the commission on if you want to go into executive session to discuss it or that we discussed it when we sent it out, but it's.
I think we we need to find a way to pay for it. There's no question about that. I will say I am, I don't think that maybe we've put the effort into finding the most beneficial outcome for that. I think there's a lot of different funding options that can allow us to recoup.
Sorry, sorry, we're on the Rural Water District Number Two.
My apologies. My my sincere apologies. I'm looking at the online one here, and it goes right from this to the next. No, I have nothing further.
Do we have any, are you fine? Do we have any, I guess, will on that? Like I said, it's the, it is the letter that we sent. They did a sign and approve it without any modification. So it's completely up to the commission.
If we're okay with moving forward in the public, this is my first instance on the commission where we've had contract negotiations in executive session, but now we're in the public meeting. And the point of public meeting is, yeah, once we get to this point, do we have copies of this? And I can share my copy to anybody who's interested. And then it be included in the minutes, the actual agreement of being included in the minutes. So.
Yes, of course, we've had executive sessions where I gave you legal advice regarding the content of the document now before you, but of course, we can't approve it in an executive session. And so it is before you for approval at whatever point you wish to do it, but we need to do it in an open public meeting.
I think, Mayor, you could just point out the highlights of the changes to that letter for the public, and then if the commission wants to approve it, they can.
Yep.
City Attorney Martin, do you have that that redlined version of our changes? That would be easier than me trying to pick it out of a black and white copy.
I could have one minute here.
I just want to make sure that all the highlights get, or changes get highlighted.
Are you referring to just maybe explaining the status quo under our current agreement and what we're doing to change it?
I guess realistically, just what the updates were to the agreement.
Okay.
And the old agreement's been public for a long time.
Sure. Well, the city and the and I'm finding the recitals helpful in the absence of anything else here, but the the city and the Rural Water District Number Two have been parties to an agreement now since 1998, where the city agreed to sell and the district agreed to purchase, treated drinking water from the city's water treatment facility. This agreement was entered into in 1998, and it was, I believe, a 40-year agreement, so it expires in 2038. At the time it was entered into, it anticipated the parties conferring and negotiating in good faith for any future changes. That only happened one time in 2011. And since 2011, the rate for water sold has been fixed at $1.44 per 1,000 gallons, which the city determined was inadequate based on increasing costs. So this agreement adjusts the rate to effective immediately to a rate of $1.80 per 1,000 gallons, and then provides for an annual inflator of up to 3% upon written notice by the city. The one of the conditions of the agreement is that the city will segregate all of the incremental additional revenues from this rate increase and use it exclusively for capital improvements at the water treatment facility. I'm looking at here, it it will be used for repairs, maintenance, and improvements, and the payment of principal and interest on any bonds issued to finance those types of improvements. But otherwise, it's just adjusting the rate from where it's been fixed since 2011 and providing for annual increases thereafter.
That, I can't remember the percentage exactly. It was somewhere around 2%, but we basically built in the $1.44 with a 2% raise to bring it to 3%, it was flat three. Yeah, to to bring that up to market for today, and then going forward, we would have the ability to adjust as needed.
Yes.
Yeah, basically, we just had to give them written notice by December 1 of the year, that calendar year, in order to go into effect January 1 of the next. And then just, I don't know if you said this, City Attorney Martin, but that new rate does go into effect January 1 of 2026.
I don't believe that was the intent. Let me look at this to make sure.
I just saw that in there, so.
There's 2.9 or 9.1, I guess.
Yeah, 9.1.
Well, it states that the rate charged by the city for water sold shall be $1.80, and then it goes on to provide for the first annual increase to be.
That is my fault.
Yep.
Yep, good clarification.
Yep. I just saw that, and I thought, okay, I better make sure we're good.
And I think something else that this did importantly is it kind of gave a timeline renegotiating this of the current contract expired in 2038, and we're agreeing that in 2028, we will sit down and and negotiate. Both parties will negotiate that going forward.
Now, that is not in the amendment, but informally, I understand that's your intent.
Yeah.
With that description being read, I would make a motion to approve the Second Amendment to Contract for Water System Project Contribution in Water Supply with the Rural Water District Number Two.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to roll call vote. Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff?
Aye.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is an executive session.
I move the city commission recess into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss with legal counsel certain issues and options related to the utilization of a tax increment financing district to fund improvements at the Abilene Industrial Park based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 75, 75-7319B2. Open meeting will resume in this room at 5:22.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to roll call vote. Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. We are in executive session. Wendy and Dominic, you're both on and able to hear. Just a reminder that we need to change over to the other Zoom so you can be part of the discussion in the room.
Will do. Thank you.
What if we use elaborate zooming? We could do that. Does that work, Ron? That way you can leave this me.
There you go. Or I can sign out of your guys' and make one on ours.
Yeah, sign out on that one. I think, because we're going to.
Oh, yeah, it says it's streaming live. Yeah, we don't want to do that.
We don't want to, I don't think we want to end the meeting, but maybe we should.
Oh, I switch. Yes, I see. So you want to switch back on.
I mean, or we just call on each other.
I know, I just.
It's not as good.
We were trying to be more efficient.
I was going to suggest we'll play one in 10 minutes. The fact we got 20 gives us plenty of time to troubleshoot. Are we broadcasting to the internet right now? We're not on. Was it?
It's a great question.
I couldn't do that.
It's not. When I do with clients, we always have issues. And I mean, they've been zooming for years and it's still, so it's just.
It's already.
The password on your computer is such a mess. Well, it's it's fine, but then it makes me do it on my phone, too, and then it opens Authenticator. But then it also gives me a code to punch into Authenticator, but I can't punch it in while I'm in the app, but it's kicking me to the app every time.
Well, it's the hackery. If you can't get it, it happens, can't get in.